So, shoot in as we're going through them and tell me what we have not added so far. We do have that the previous garage has burned and it is a full loss. There's no record of the previous size of the garage. The current pitch request is to match the house pitch. The current pitch request has been denied by Bill Devon. The question is whether there was a true hardship or not. Have we responded to that?
I think we all approved, but I've decided that there is no evidence of a true hardship.
So, there's no evidence of it. I just want to, I'm not speaking for everybody, I just want to mention, no evidence of a true hardship. There is a possibility of changing the pitch and still keeping the garage size. What would that be, turning the pitch? How do you correctly say that? To switch from front to back, side to side? What's the correct way to say that?
As part of a finding of fact, that would be something you may want to bring up when you are basing your decision on whether to approve or deny. Findings of fact-
So, we don't let it-
It's not a fact line-
To throw it in right now-
Yeah, right. At this point in time, the finding-
Well, whether it's possible or not is a fact.
Yeah. That's a possibility.
That is possible, okay.
But, it's the address, the zoning, you know, what that, that helps. You know, it's an R2 zone because-
What, it says an R1?
It says R2.
It says, current zone, property 01 residential.
Which one are we looking at?
His questionnaire.
Oh, here's, okay.
Well, his questionnaire, but I believe it's truly an R2.
Oh, so this isn't correct, right here. His, okay. So, do we have where it says it's an R2?
On our agenda it does, but I'm trying to see if there's-
Well, I guess, I mean-
Bill's?
Bill's residential. He's like a single-family residential, so why?
Well, I mean, regulations apply to both our-
I was gonna say-
Because why even have the R1? Because it's always gonna come here.
So, this is the residential zone.
And I think he would be an R2, Bill's residential.
Yeah.
I believe I denied it under an R2. That's part of the denial process, making sure that the facts surrounding the property are correct. So that when the public hearing goes out, it's a correct statement.
And we have the address as 86 James. Currently in residential zone. Property ID is 03-07-376-004. Anything else ready?
I was informed about the meeting, but did not sure.
Right, no, no, you know, he didn't-
Okay, is that, sorry?
He didn't plead his case, I guess.
Correct.
All right.
Or being able to offer suggestions, you know, being able to converse on possibilities.
Sure. Anything else?
In fact, you had two respondents and one written, I believe.
Correct. Two, yep. So, you've got two residents for public comment? And, oops.
We did have one-
We had one more written. The one email, which the question was that we were tired, required to attend the public hearing on 6:10 to officially oppose the zoning request. And the response was no, that they were able to send in an email or to attend.
And I never did respond.
And you know, is that a response? Correct, correct. Thank you.
Then I would include that in a fact because that wasn't, that was just an inquiry.
Anything further? No, okay.
You need a motion this second.
Good, made it so far.
Yep.
All right. Are you ready to entertain a motion? You sure are. All right. If you would like to make that motion, then what would that be? Anyone?
I'd like to make a motion to decline variance appeal number 19-001 in the amount of-
I'm sorry, you need a motion in a second for the findings of fact and then you can move forward to make your motion to approve or deny.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Then I guess I'll make a motion to approve the findings of fact. Support.
All right. Motion made by Councilman Hayden to approve the findings of fact, as previously stated, and supported by Councilman Robinson. Any further discussion on the findings of fact? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you very much. Now, would we like to continue or not? Are you ready to?
Yep. I'd like to make a motion to decline variance appeal number 19-001 in the amount of four and a half feet for the total accessory building height not to exceed 19. Or that should be 15.
Thank you. Not only in half, but yeah, make sure it's in half. Support the motion, anyone?
You should, if I could suggest to the motion maker before the second order follows in, is that you are basing your decision for that on the findings of fact that were previously submitted.
Yeah, and one other thing, in the future, we definitely have to have this, you know, we don't do many of these.
No, and you know what? I'll get ready for you next time.
Please.
How's that? Okay. I won't get, not the answer, but I'll get the process ready for you.
We're not looking for a special lawyer for raising for you. Because any of us has even done one of these.
We can just amend, we'll just make the amendment.
Our other one was much easier.
Not to exceed the 19 and a half feet based on the findings of facts.
Based on the findings of fact.
Very good, thank you.
Liz, will you read it back to us a little bit?
Which one?
The last one.
The last one of Mark's.
So, I'm sorry. Trustee Robinson declines based on findings of fact, the appeal of 19-001 in the amount of four and a half feet for a total accessory building height not to exceed 19 and a half feet for 86 James Street.
That's not quite.
Okay.
It was, he declined, declined the variance appeal 19-001 in the amount of four and a half feet for a total accessory building height not to exceed 19 and a half based on the findings of fact.
Okay, thank you. But I do like including the address.
And that was 86 James Street.
I mean, because Liz mentioned that, I think I liked, and if you don't, that's fine.
Look, let me have to make an amendment to that. Make a motion for amendment.
We don't have a second or a, I mean, nobody has a second or a vote yet for that.
So, Liz, could you read that back because you have a motion included there, I was thinking.
It's a test. Motion to decline variance appeal 19-001 in the amount of four and a half feet for total accessory, accessory building height not to exceed 19 and one half feet based on findings of fact for 86 James Street.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Do I support the motion?
Support.
Who's that? George. All right. Motion by Councilman Robinson, supported by Councilman George, after reading back by Liz. Anything further? All in favor, or we'll do a follow-up. Please. Batson?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Kornikoff?
Yes.
And Bryce?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0. We thank everybody for being patient with us. We thank Bill for helping us along in our journey. It's been a very long time since we've done this and it was, the last one was a lot easier for us, so thank you. All right, can you entertain a motion to adjourn? Make a motion. Thank you. Sorry.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Thank you. Adjourn at 7:19. Before we start the next meeting, I have to put stuff out. I know.
Good.
I'll get the format for you next time, so you'll just head.
Thank you, Bill. Thanks, Bill, and I'll look at it.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Last thing I might have to do is maybe back-
Do you want a copy?
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
It's number F. Did you show them where? Okay, wonderful. So, you'll get a chance to go ahead and stand up and say what you have to say and then you'll see where we're talking about it, right? Right there. This is where we'll be talking about it, but this is for you to stand up and to talk about if you'd like to share information and then we will discuss it there. Okay? This sits at 7:00. Thanks. So, you can go ahead and stand up and say what you would like to share and then when we come down here, we'll kind of get a chance to talk about it. And there is an actual, we may ask questions of you if people have any questions. All right? Space. I am almost ready. That's fine. You tell me. Trying to get him on here.
Was Dan available?
Not yet. I need to really start. Do you want to, do you want to do that? Because we still have, like, a lot of things going on first. When does he want to join at the question? So, it's up to you timeframe-wise. We have a bunch of items. Where's he at? Uh, of course, it's not, I don't know where's that. What state is he in?
I don't know, he's an hour, it's an hour ahead.
I'll, I'll remember because I know you're explaining the camera. Right, but I'm saying, I don't know if it's where my camera's. Dan? Hi, did you want to join the meeting for the entire meeting or just for the interview part? I'm sorry? I believe it's Samantha and Debbie. Just Samantha? Yes. Well, we're just now getting ready to start the meeting, so I would say maybe about 10 or 15 minutes. Okay, do I leave you on the phone? Okay. I will put you on speaker for everybody and then we will certainly let you know when we're ready to interview.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, thanks. Are we ready? Yep. All right. Good evening. We call to order the regularly, I'm sorry, the scheduled meeting of the Village Council 2019. It is 7:26. Thank you for joining us. Can we stand for the pledge of allegiance, please, at the end of the conference? Bryce?
Here.
Batson?
Here.
Eshman via phone. No voting privileges. George?
Here.
Hayden?
Robinson?
Here.
Scornica?
Here.
Thank you. entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
I'd like to amend the agenda to move 7B to 7A because B is a critical part of this meeting, because this meeting was established for the public hearing to approve the budget. So, I suggest that we take care of the most immediate and then change, so switch, switch those out and tabling 7C, D, E, F, and 8A.
Support.
Okay, we have a 7pm appointment for the 7A, so I would like to leave that as is. Tabling what, I'm sorry?
7C, D, E, F, and 8A.
We cannot approve our budget without the DDA's budget, which is C. And you just say, you didn't say F, right? But you said D.
I said 7C, D, E, F, and 8A, tabling those.
We have to leave C, we have to leave F.
I would like to also leave-
And A, yeah, so we have to leave A.
Okay, this is, this is my motion, so the, the reason for that is because we still have another meeting in two weeks where we can approve the, the DDA budget at that time as well as even our own, but this meeting was a public hearing for the budget intentionally. It was not set up for a, a regular meeting and then this got, you know, all put in here.
And any changes to the agenda were to be made beforehand unless there's a mistake or an error on them, as stated in our filings and MML. All of the information's on there, pretty much needs to say as things that may be done besides D and E. So, I guess you guys need to make a decision. We have people here for-
We have a motion, we have a support.
And- C, D, E, F, and A?
I would prefer that to amend the agenda. If we get to a point where we seem we don't have enough time to cover everything, I would say that we could make a motion to table any remaining items. I think I would rather keep the agenda the way it is and I especially think it would be better and more considerate of the person we asked to come and interview if we could-
Oh, I understand. The residents here.
I understand, but I, because of the budget, that is, that is a critical piece.
Yes, but we've already, already all participated in budget workshops, which should give surprises. It shouldn't be a long discussion on the budget if we've all been doing our homework properly in the workshops and got our input and that's what we're supposed to. So, I don't expect that the budget should take that long.
The only two discussion items are D and F. Everything else has already been discussed.
You're saying, what has already been discussed?
Everything besides D and F. Everything else is just a final motion. We've had discussions on all those-
We've discussed C?
Yeah, when do we discuss C?
Well, C is an approval of, if you had any questions, you would have asked Matt before tonight and you can ask him while he's still here, but that would be a quick approval as we've had all, all that information with us already.
So, I have a motion by Scornica, second by Robinson, to amend the budget to table-
amend the agenda.
To the agenda.
To table on the agenda, to table C, D, E, F, and under unfinished business A. Is that correct? That's the motion.
Yes. I mean, again, to reiterate, we were only supposed to be here mainly for the agenda, I mean, for the, for the budget portion and then we also included because of the interview, but all this other stuff was, like, it came in at the end of the week, so.
If I may, and A was, 8A was given in May, those are all item carries over from the last agenda.
Just one thing, if I may, unfinished business, master approval, master plan approval A was tabled at the May 20th meeting for tonight.
Right, as was the wellness and the inter, those were, okay.
They were not on the- Well, the information we had had, we had, council requested more information.
I'm just saying, that one specifically was tabled for-
The master plan.
But we needed the maps too, right? The maps, weren't we waiting for the, the maps to be?
I, I remember Dan saying he wanted just to read through and make sure the changes were what, what he thought they were.
Dan's on the phone, he can speak.
Dan? Dan, are you there?
Yes, I'm, I'm on you, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, so, it was my understanding that we tabled the master plan specifically for tonight, is that correct or was that incorrect?
So, you're breaking up, but I, the, the question I understand it was the reason we were tabling the master plan and when we talked about the master plan, the last we met was that there were documents within that master plan, it was recommended by McKenna, if I'm not mistaken, that the whole master plan be assembled for, for distribution back to council for us to review and then from there taken for the vote. And I don't, to my knowledge, I don't know that any of those documents have been applied or vice, at least I haven't seen it.
Okay, is that your understanding? Okay. All right, okay. So, my understanding was that I was going to talk to McKenna about the changes that you had made and specifically about the village park changing the name to Ortonville Wildlife Preservation Park, which I have done. I talked to Sue Cronander last Friday, I spent about 45 minutes with her on the phone to go over with all of the changes that you had requested we make. So, if it was your understanding that you want to see those changes in effect before you yea or nay that, that's my mistake and I will take that back to Susan.
Yeah, it sounds like we communicated that right here, just waiting for the documentation of just the planning, where it is showing that.
It has been updated.
Well, per my meeting with Sue Cronander on Friday, yes. I spent 45 minutes with her on the phone going over all of the changes.
So, you have the updated document?
I do not have the updated document.
Okay.
As of today.
I think that's what we were waiting on, is right on the calls.
Okay, so we have-
Because the, the errors that were in the original document, we wanted to make sure that it was corrected.
Okay, all right. Very good. All right, any further discussion on the formal over there? We have a motion on the table by Councilman Scornica, supported by Councilman Robinson to change the agenda as a London. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I have two ayes on the opposed.
Can you, Connie, can you, can you reiterate to me what the revised agenda will now be?
So, what was taken out?
Are we gonna, are we gonna interview first? So, A is, A is still okay? Number one?
She switched B and A. C, D, E, F, and-
Okay, so B is first, then A?
And 8A was taken out.
Yeah, that's a fact. I'm okay with that.
All right, so motion carries, 42.
So, to reiterate, we are moving B to A, A to B, tabling C, D, E, F, and A, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. All right, so, for F, we will not be doing that tonight, we'll be doing that at the June 24th meeting, which means it would not be a public comment under four, I'm sorry, five. It would be at the agenda number nine if you choose to comment or you can do that in June 24th. All right, okay, so, let's begin with our public comment on agenda items only and please remember that that is the revised agenda that you have in front of you, so if anybody has any comments, please step forward. Hearing none. We will enter into our public hearing to receive the public comment and input that's on our proposed Village of Ortonville budget for the fiscal year 2019, 2020. And we will enter that at 7:37 PM to hear comment or input regarding the Village of Ortonville's proposed budget. Just a reminder, council will hold all comments until after the public hearing concludes. Anybody from the public have any questions or comments on the village's fiscal year budget for 2019, please? All right. Having no further comments on this matter, the public hearing is now closed at 7:37 PM.
I'm sorry, what time did it go into public hearing?
7:37. And it will be closed at 7:37.
Should we just make it, I, I propose that we just do it at 7:38, just like as the twins were born, it's always gonna be the minute.
So, we have, the public hearing is now closed at 7:38 PM. Item 7A will be our Village of Ortonville fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget approval.
I do have a question. Beth? Would you mind coming to the floor?
Sure.
On page three, can you just rephrase me, why is building and ground being, that's highlighted? What was the, I don't recall what that?
That is-
Was that because that's something changed?
Those, that's the only change that was made after our last meeting.
Okay.
We added $500 to the BGYA and we took that out of building and grounds. So, the bottom line didn't change, we just moved that $500.
Okay.
Is that it?
And then, under department 266, the salaries, and we just, that's the cleaning personnel?
Yes.
Okay. And under 265, just right above it, his, new equipment for historic properties, what were we looking at for historic properties for that, 5,000?
I believe it was-
Air condition?
Air, central air or a, a air unit to any one building?
For the old, to them attached to the-
Okay, thank you. I apologize, I wasn't at the initial meeting, so, okay. I'm sorry?
The furnace was taken care of.
Taken care of.
Yeah.
28 current budgets, so this will be for the AC.
Okay, and page four, Department 441, our current budget, our actual is at $38,821, and we're projecting $23,000. Why the decline in that?
What, I'm sorry, what, where are you at?
441, Department, which is supervisor labor, our actual right now is the $38,821, but we're proposing $23,000. Why that decrease if we're already?
It's because the other portion of it is in our street.
You split, okay.
We split between.
Okay, so, but even under our actual at 38 this year, would that still also be split? So why, so wouldn't that be split?
The 38 has already been taken out.
It's already been taken out?
Yes. So if you look under the road account?
Okay.
It's already, it's already been applied.
Okay.
Yeah, I remember that was, they split it differently because of the fact that labor can also be counted on several grant money that we're receiving and like that.
Yeah, we can also, well, almost.
Act 51 or whatever.
Yeah, the Act 51 money.
Yeah.
Because a lot of the, a lot of the stuff the DPW guys do pass through the streets. You know, the snowball and all the crack seal and all that kind of stuff.
And then for me, I just have one last question. Do we have that taxation form for the mills?
I do have it. I guess I neglected to put it in the packet.
Because this is based on eight mills, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So nothing's changed there?
No, because we're not increasing taxes. So I just, because we've had that before, and I just was wanting to wear that. So we have that prepared, ready to go for signature then?
Yes, it's already been signed.
It's already been signed?
I believe it was done in our workshops. We have it done.
Okay, could you just get a copy out to us maybe tomorrow?
I can do that.
Because it's not dated, it's just signed, because it wouldn't be dated before we approve it, right? Does the date matter?
Well, it was dated when it was signed.
Okay.
The clerk and the clerk representative signed it.
Okay. I don't know if it makes a difference on when we approve it, the budget, the date should be the same. We might want to just check that out.
I don't think on that form.
Okay.
This form, the resolution, that's the one that, that will get dated whenever we approve the budget.
Right, but the taxation form of the eight mills, the levy, that form, does that date, is it, does it matter that that date's not the same date as the date that we approved the budget?
No.
Okay, just want to make sure we don't have any issues with that.
Okay.
All right. So before we approve the budget, I just want to, for, for note of record, is that all expenditures are to be for public purposes only. And expending public funds for private purposes under Michigan law is illegal. And that would be it. So I just want that for note of record to be in there when we approve the budget.
Do you want to repeat that, please?
In accordance with the general law, village, all expenditures are to be for public purpose only. The right of the public to receive and enjoy the benefit and the use determines whether the use is public or private. And, I don't know what I did away with. Expend you that.
I was gonna say, what page?
Page 72 of the general law handbook, top paragraph, expenditures for the operating budget.
Thank you.
Almost the last sentence, all expenditures are for public purposes only.
Okay.
Page 81, the second column near the last paragraph, the right of the public to receive and enjoy the benefit of the use determines whether the use is a public or private. And then finally. Not that one, yeah, that one, what was it?
Okay.
I'm sorry, page 82, expending public funds for a, for a private purpose under Michigan law is illegal. So just for note of record on that, and I would make a motion to approve the budget, to approve the 2019, 2020 budget for fiscal year ending June 30, 19, or I'm sorry, 2020, in the amount of $521,351.12 at a millage levy of eight mills per $100 of taxable valuations.
Okay, so you're getting really specific on me. In the amount of how much?
Five, 21, 351, 12.
12, okay.
That's the amount of the budget that we received today, that final number.
That, excuse me, that is not the total of the budget.
That's not.
That does not look like the total.
Oh.
The total is 689, 615.
Okay.
This is the number right above it. The number you quoted are the fund balances.
Okay, 68, all right. All right, so 689, 615.
Okay, and you can give me the exact verbiage?
Okay, motion to approve the 2019 to 2020 budget for fiscal year ending June 30, 2020, in the amount of 689, 615, and a millage levy of eight mills per $100 of taxation valuations.
$1,000.
I'm sorry?
I think you said $100, per $1,000.
Okay.
Can you get that to me in writing after?
I sure can.
Thank you.
Don't let me forget it.
I will not let you forget. You're not walking off that.
I just, I would just, since we don't have the mills, I just want to make sure that it's in there, and it's a great thing for paper trail of the mills. And for our residents to know that the taxes are at the eight mills, just, that's not something always at the forefront.
Support.
So I have motioned by Hayden, or I have motioned by Skornika, second by Hayden. And we have a little help out on that, please, please.
This isn't supportive of the budget itself. This isn't supporting.
Our budget.
Or a summary of the budget. And I just have one, I just want to make sure, clarify one thing I brought up at a prior meeting, that we will be looking at the Parkinson Rec Master Plan, five-year plan, and a consulting fee associated with that. Our portion, village portion will probably be about $1,000.
We have never paid that before.
Within the last five years?
When we did pay you some.
We never did?
I mean, years ago.
Not since I've been here.
You don't think, you don't think they're trying to pull one over, I mean, Fred told me.
Fred wouldn't.
Fred told me that, oh, our portion, the village portion of that would probably be about $1,000. I brought that up at a prior meeting.
Well, we've never paid it before.
All right, so if that's, if that's not a problem, I don't want to talk about it. But I just say, if we get, we get billed $1,000, say, let's say we do more, at least we do more.
Satisfied.
All right.
So for over budget on that account, we don't blame you.
All right.
Can I bring it?
It's right here. I have it right here.
Any further questions, comments on that? All right, last question, you have a roll call though? Bryce?
Yes.
Batu?
Yes.
Eshman without voting for Rogers? George?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Skornika?
Yes.
Who supported that? Oh, Ted did. I'm sorry. Oh, you did?
Yes.
Oh, I thought.
Motion carries, six, Sarah? Next up, item 7B, we have our council interview with a potential candidate for village manager position. Welcome to the podium, Samantha Bell.
Hi.
The personnel committee has had a chance to sit down and talk with her, and we would love for the council to get a chance to ask some questions and get a chance to meet her as well. Let me make sure. Dan, can you hear us?
No, I can hear you fine, but it's, and I also have very clearly, but wherever the phone is at, it appears to be closer to you and on you to others. So I think we're gonna be questioning wherever that phone is at, if we can, if we have to go to that phone.
Yeah, can we do, here, I'm gonna set you down, and we'll do like a little test, and we'll see if you can hear me, okay?
Okay, that sounds good.
Take it. You can have it.
All right, testing, one, two, three.
Okay, I can hear that.
Was that good?
Yes, I can hear that flying, and then what about the others? What should teach, I'd like to hear obviously the first part of the process.
You got Mark down here, can you hear me?
If I just pass the phone down, if it's like a question, no?
Well, listen, yeah, we'll speak up.
Okay.
Dan, this is Mark Robinson, can you hear me? Dude, we walked in the room.
It's okay, can you hear?
Hello, you got Mark here.
I can hear.
Okay, Colleen?
Hey, Dan.
Yes.
All right. Would Dan like to go first or last? Do you want to go first or last?
Um, I would say let council there go first, I'm further away.
I'll be your guide.
All right, Mark, would you like to start on your end? Mark Batu started.
I will, I've read your qualifications in your summary, it's very good. My question's gonna be a little bit different. I am not a personnel committee, but my question would be, what's the question that you really study for? I was hoping that the council would ask you that you could really nail. I don't want to put you on the spot, and it doesn't have to be very long, but of all your accomplishments, which is quite a bit. And it's very impressive.
Thank you.
What is the question that you thought, oh shoot, I hope they ask me?
Um, that's, that's a great question, and I, I don't know that I thought about the questions I wanted everyone to ask, but I guess it would be a softball kind of question, like, you know, what have you done to prepare for this job? You know, what, how has your background shaped your skill set for this position, things like that? But I'm open to any questions, so I'm not thinking.
How about, tell, sorry, Mark, how about, tell us a little bit about yourself, and maybe then that will come up.
Yeah, so I grew up in Lake Orion, Michigan, born and raised, and I went to Labor High School, I played sports, and I worked very hard, and I got a scholarship to play softball at Open University. I went to school at OU for political science, and right after I graduated, I joined a campaign for Mike Bouchard, who's running for governor, so I opened Open University. And after that, I just kind of fell in love with politics, with campaigns, and then I moved on. And I worked for Romney, I worked in the state legislature for four years. I've done some MMFLA stuff, municipality work, and I've been a lobbyist. So my passion though is local government, because that's where it affects the most people. I think that's where you can provide the betterment of the community, and that's why I apply to this position.
Mark, would you want to continue?
Oh, no, I'll pass it on, I've got a couple, but, thank you. All right, Samantha, from a local government standpoint, and I've read your resume too, it's, it's very detailed. But specifically from a local government standpoint, such as from a village standpoint, Ortonville, what, what have you done, where you've actually sat and received a particular municipality like, like Ortonville, and actually got a particular duty, I guess that's what I want to say.
I have not served a local community in the state of Michigan or elsewhere. That being said, that's why I would like to take a step forward and be a part of this village council. It's really just the call to serve, I think, I'm really passionate, I've always had that feeling inside of me that I wanted to be there for the people, I want to be able to help, and I want to be able to be an advisor and a liaison for the council. So that's kind of where I'm at. I wish I had already served, I have not. But I've done a lot of work with local governments.
When we were going over the budget, talking about various terms and things like that, were you familiar with any of those terms?
Yes, as I was kind of scrambling through, yeah. Obviously, you know, millages and things of that nature, yeah, I mean, it's all relative. I didn't have any specific questions or anything going over the budget, but I haven't seen this quite a bit as well, so.
Who's asking next, and before you?
I guess we'll just go this way. And I'll, and I'll have additional questions to.
So Samantha, I know we, we talked to the personnel committee, now that you've seen our council here, obviously you can see that we don't always agree on everything, which is normal, you know, with most people. Would you do as village manager to help facilitate overcoming differences in council members' viewpoints, things like that?
So, oh, wait a second. So I think one of my strongest qualities is my ability to see all sides of the situation. I can, you know, I can have a personal opinion, but I can also see everyone else's viewpoints and stances on any particular issue. And I think that's really important when coming together and kind of trying to figure out what we want to do and how that's going to benefit the community. You know, I've always kind of been like the team player that's, you know, trying to keep everyone's morale up, but also very focused and really motivated to stay on point, stay on track, and make sure that it's facilitated appropriately so we're moving forward. Can I tell the, oh, it's cracking, I thought it was laughing.
Are you still there, Dan?
Yes, I am.
Okay, can you hear anything?
Yes, I can, I can hear. I never have a follow-up question then, Samantha, so then as a village manager, do you think it is the village manager's role to sway opinions of council members?
Absolutely not.
Thank you.
No.
I have another question if.
I'm doing a dance.
That's all right.
Nothing. Go ahead.
My next question, and I, I heard some talk about budgets, et cetera. Samantha, could you explain your budget strategy, and what that would be in detail, to setting budget for the first, very first time?
That's a great question. I am not super familiar with setting a budget for a local municipality. However, I'm pretty sure that we just need to have taxes paid and things of that nature to keep it going. So my strategy, I don't know that I have a sound one at this point. Obviously, you don't want to raise taxes on folks, and because I'm in the public forum right now. So I would have to think about that one, to be honest with you.
All right, so, so the other question I had about budgets, that, and I guess, it sounds like you don't have budgets or experience, but, but do you have any idea what it would take to amend the budget?
From what I understand, different, like conferences and workshops and things like that, it's, it's a huge process. I know from the state legislature, it's, you know, there's a million different conferences on different subcommittees, on different, you know, appropriations within the state, so I imagine that at the local level, it's very similar. Now, I'm not, I never claim to be a budget expert by any means, but if I can learn at the state level very quickly, I don't see an issue with me learning very quickly at the local level as well.
Okay, and then could you tell us, looking overall, any budgets for the village?
Um, I do believe. Yes, I can. Just give me a moment here.
You're with Spencer tonight?
What was your question again specifically?
What the overall annual budget is for the village.
The requested budget or the actual?
What the overall annual budget is for the village.
I remember it too. This is like a trick question, but it's not. The overall annual budget is, I, I don't know, this is kind of putting me in the spot and going through all these paperwork. I'm sorry, I apologize.
That's okay, you don't, you don't have the inch.
What is it? I'm just, for my curiosity, what is the number?
What the annual budget is, I thought we just talked about 500. What the annual budget is, I thought we just talked about five hundred, five hundred dollars.
No.
No. Six eighty-nine, six fifteen.
That's next year.
That's the one we just...
Sorry, remember that we...
I think it was the first five, 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 and then the second, that would be about the question.
Yes. James, fine?
Is anybody else holding any questions?
I have a question. So how proficient are you with BSNA?
How proficient are you with BSNA?
BSNA?
Do you know what that is?
No, it sounds like, um, an acronym for some sort.
Well, describe your management style. Describe your management style.
It's okay, um, my management style is obviously working with a team and delegating responsibilities, and of course, um, being as open and communicative as I can to my security officers and the council, um, and that's kind of, that's kind of it.
What do you know about our community?
Um, so I, like I said, I grew up in Lake Orion, and, uh, growing up, I played softball in Brandon, uh, I played basketball tournaments in Ortonville, uh, we went to the ANW, I have a few friends that lived out here as well, we went to Lake a lot. Aside from that, I don't know a ton, but that doesn't mean that I'm not willing to jump in, dive in, and be a part of the community, um, because I really think that's, that's step one.
I have a question.
Hold on.
What exactly is your five-year goal for being here in the village?
So I'd love to be here for five years, um, I would love to be able to support the council, um, you know, if I were able, if the seat were to open up and I could run, that would be, um, you know, a possibility, but, um, I like the idea of being support staff and helping everyone stay on track and the, and the village, um, so that kind of answers your question. I don't want to dip out in four years here or something, so, um, I'd love to be here for five years.
I have a question. An employee has violated a major safety rule, how and when do you deal with that?
Right away.
Deal with it always right away.
Okay, thank you. I have a question, as replaced the village politics, so you have, you'll be responsible for setting up, uh, the planning, uh, commit, uh, commission meetings, and also the DEA meetings, and certainly our council meetings, so, um, in each, obviously, there's two of those, uh, crewed. So my question to you would be that a person, the prominent person within the commission, planning commission, asks you specifically that he wants you to do something to work on, the DEA, DEA also asks you specifically, hey, this is great proposal, whatever, and we'd like to have you work on, a, a council person, alright, from the council says, hey, Samantha, I need you to work on this, how would you approach those requests?
I would obviously start with the council's request first, and let them know what the others had requested of me as well, so that we're all on the same page, and we all can kind of work on a deadline together. I think that this position specifically is village manager for this council, so I believe in that regard, the council's request would come first, and if I, you know, spoke with the council and they said, you know, work on the DEA thing first, or we can, you know, um, but I think that would be my allegiance and my loyalty is to the council first, so that's how I would approach that.
Okay, thank you. So when do you think it would be appropriate for the village manager to act outside the council's direction?
To act outside of the council's discretion direction, is that what you said?
That's correct.
I don't think it would, there would be a good time to do that.
So it would never be a good time to act outside the council's direction?
No.
Okay.
If I'm understanding it correctly, or the question correctly, I, I don't think that would be... I mean, now, sometimes I can be as a non-voting member, correct, but I don't vote, so I, I, I don't think there's a time to do that.
Okay, so as a manager, uh, there are going to be times that you're going to need to make some decisions, right? And, um, those decisions are going to directly, it could directly affect a village resident, it could affect a village merchant, or it could affect, uh, affect the village employee, et cetera, so all, all those, I know something could come up that you're going to have to make a decision on, whether the council's there or not, how would you approach making a decision that would affect any one of those decisions?
Um, I think it would be wise to assess the situation, and if it's an immediate, uh, you know, decision that I need to make, I would, I still feel that I would reach out to the council, um, in a non-formal capacity to kind of get the lay of the land before making a decision. Now, that being said, if the council had told me, go ahead and make a decision on X, Y, and Z, and then report back, then I would do so, um...
And then one other last question I would have, it's, um, within your performance rankings, how many drug reports have you had working for, or you had annual performance reviews on?
Um, I did not have to give an annual performance review, but I had to hire thirty people to work on a campaign for six months in Wisconsin, and, um, at, at, at the three month mark, I did have to assess each employee and decide if they were able to have a wage increase or not, um, so that is the best example that I have for you.
Just a minute, how did you determine if they were...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
How, how did you determine if they were qualified to get a rate of increase or not?
What part did you hear, I'm sorry?
So, Dan?
I, I thought I heard what qualifications were you looking for to make decisions to hire those thirty people?
Oh, no, no.
For people to put in certain strategic areas, to send out flyers, those criteria, and did you use to select those thirty people?
No, uh, Colleen had a piggyback question, hold on one second.
Alright, you're the answer to that.
Well, she, she did, yeah. Uh, I was asking her a piggybacking to your question and answer, um, what, um, what did she use to just, to determine if those employees that she hired to work on that campaign, what did she use to determine if they were, uh, if they warranted pay increase?
Sure, so, um, basically, the requirements for position are pretty simple, you have X amount of doors you should be hitting, and phone calls you should be making in support of the candidate, um, whereas many of them did hit their goals, um, they weren't necessarily actually doing their job, so part of, you know, my job is to make sure that those calls are actually being made, um, voter contacts are actually, are actually being made, and so some of my job was driving around and making sure they were actually knocking on doors, and I know that sounds a little bit psycho, but you won't believe how many folks I caught not doing it, um, and obviously, that wouldn't warrant a wage increase, but some folks, uh, you know, just went above and beyond the call of duty, they would work eight to eight on a Sunday in Wisconsin, which is kind of unheard of because they love football there, so, um, things like that, it was, and because I had done that before, and I've had to put in the hours and the, and the work and knocking on doors, I know what it takes, and I know, um, this gets said, so, hit that.
Okay. Who's next?
Me!
Hold on one second. Alright, I have two questions for you, we did, um, talk briefly when you had a chance to meet with us before, um, we kind of talked about budgeting on the local level, but tell me about your experience on the state level, I know you were given a budget, and then what?
Um, so basically, uh, the way I, I was the communications advisor for the House Republican Caucus, so I was assigned essentially all of the state reps in the, um, in the Republican Caucus, so that being said, we were given the budget a lot of the times, and we had to craft the talking points, and we had to craft, um, the messaging, and kind of spinning it, and make, having it make sense to the public, because as you know, you know, a lot of constituents, residents, um, don't know how the appropriation budget works, um, and it is a complicated process, and it is long, and it is drawn out, but, um, so essentially, we were given different, um, tasks within the budget, like different subcommittees, things like that, depending on what the rep wanted essentially, I was not responsible for crafting any kind of this number, that number, no number crunching by any means, or policy directives, but of course, we all have ideas, right? So, that's kind of...
And then my second question is, um, we obviously see, we do have a lot of experience at the state level, what is it going to do for you and bring to you, and give you an advantage at the local level?
Um, I do think I have an advantage because I have so many connections and such a vast network, um, you know, everyone's just a kind of a phone call away, and you're never, you never leave the Lansing bubble once you, once you're in it, so, um, and I'm really lucky and blessed to have even excellent connections with the current state reps, you know, um, who are always there for me because I was there for them, and I think it's like a family essentially, and it's, um, super beneficial, I mean, I just called them and asked a question.
So to piggyback off that, obviously, if the clerk or treasurer has a question, they're going to come to you, what are you going to do along the lines as you're learning you have a question? What would you, what would you think your...
Um, if I have a question, I'll come to you guys as well, so, or is that, wait?
In, in your job duties, so you come up with a question, um, like as Dan mentioned, what about, uh, putting the budget together, or something along that lines, when you said, okay, there's conferences and workshops?
Yeah.
But you come across another challenge in your job duties, how, how do you get answers? What are you going to do?
Possibly, I, you know, ask other folks within different villages what they're doing, um, how it all kind of works, I don't know how I get the answers that I need, but I always get them, and I think that's just being, um, passionate, having that drive to figure it out, um, I don't know if I can visually explain that, but, okay, I can.
I guess I have a question.
Can I get a drink of water? Of course.
We're taxing her, Dan, hold on.
Okay, so I'll start my question, um, so if, a- as you mentioned, you, you may be a district attorney in some areas of, of direct experience and stuff, how do you feel about going to get some more training or education to supplement or filling out any areas where you might see?
Absolutely, I am a lifelong learner, I would, I'd love doing anything to expand my knowledge base and skill set, I'm always very open to that, so absolutely, that would be of great interest to me.
So I have one question. Am I okay to ask?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, this has to do with ordinance and enforcing ordinance, so, Samantha, how would you, sorry, how would you address, to hold you, I'm not talking about just admission, putting, uh, addressing a resident that is not complying with the village ordinance and are not complying with the work agreement?
How would I address it?
Yes.
Well, I would look at the ordinance and make sure that they are in violation, and I'm pretty sure there is a system within each ordinance as to how to address that, um, and I'm not fully aware of the village's procedure on that, or past practices, but, I, I don't have, I have my own personal answer, I mean, I would obviously want to talk to the resident, I don't know how many times, and if it's, you know, within a public hearing, public setting, um, I guess I would be curious as to what we've done in the past, obviously, because I know this wouldn't be the first time, uh, something like this has happened or whatnot, but, um, does that help to answer your question?
Good.
I have a question, you can stay there, I'll just speak up, um, as far as Robert's rules, what's your affiliation with Robert's rules, how well do you know it?
I know how we do stuff in the House, in, in, but that's also very different than the Senate, so, um, I'm pretty familiar, um, some things that you guys were doing earlier, I, like, I knew we needed a second, um, but I'm not, like, well-versed, I don't know, like, the back of my hand, but I could learn it, um, I put together, like, a script, like, ideally, but not good for today, but... Any other questions?
Yeah, absolutely, I happen to have a copy of the job posting, I was trying to find it on my phone.
It's on, you can pull it up on your phone now.
I know, I was, I was trying to do that, and I thought I would have...
On the website?
Yeah.
It's, it's in news and notices?
Yeah, yeah, I was, I had taken a screenshot, I just like, um... Well, I'll just look it up, I'll later, if we've got done, but, um, uh, how would you go about getting funding for a major project?
Funding for a major project, obviously, I want to consult with the state level, um, and the MEPC, and seeing what we could do, and potentially, um, grant funding and things like that, um, so I would probably start there, I would start also, if we needed funding in the local area, to go to our state rep prior to the budget and appropriations process, and run it past him, and see what they could do, because obviously, as you guys know, it's not always the lawmaker that's doing all of the big running around, and the policy and the legislative work, it's their staff, and it's their network, and it's the lobbyists and talking to them, so I would start, start Lansing and kind of work my way through, which depending on what kind of project we're talking about.
Samantha, just one question, I kind of want to add this, but, um, do you currently have any connections in other people, with other villages or other superpositions?
Sure, yeah, so obviously, I'm from Lake Orion, so Orion Township, our Orion Township supervisor is Chris Barnett, and he and I are very close professional colleagues, and, you know, he's always said, if you ever have any questions or need any help with anything, the door is always open, and he's great, um, his brother is the mayor of Rochester, um, so I have a lot of connections and a lot of folks I can always ask as well.
What's your grant writing experience?
I have not, I don't have a ton of grant writing experience, um, it's never really come up in any of my positions, but I could probably learn very quickly. Find somebody who could.
What's that?
Dan, are there any more questions?
Well, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'm just going to leave you on speaker, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for joining us. Yeah, thank you, sure, thank you for your time.
I'd just like to point out, I got all of my steps in, okay?
Thanks, Samantha.
Thank you.
Better be careful.
Didn't have that wrist within, huh?
That's a little...
Thank you.
Let's see you again.
This wasn't an easy walk back and forth.
She feels very well. Alright.
She's healed.
And we are, let's see, we're moving on to item number eight, which will be our public comments on non-agenda items only, and now's your chance, if you have something that is not on the agenda, and you'd like to come up and introduce yourself? You don't mind stating your address, please?
Hi, my name is Jamie, and my wife is Lisa, we own the, uh, property of three Sicker Street, and I have heard from a gentleman before, uh, I think his name was Phil. And I heard from a gentleman before, I think his name was Bill, up in the other building, that the village was interested in inviting this property from us to run a drainage, so this is not part of the agenda, the agenda. I was giving a small proposal for the village, but I can make it over to you tomorrow if it helps. And the other thing is that I would like to move in on this thing pretty quick because that started becoming an issue. You probably see that over there, Saturday, I think my kid said that you were up there with Bob too.
Bob, I was gonna say, Bob and Dan and I had a chance to go up there, and we're talking about putting the drain in. Can you tell us how that's affecting you at your property, not necessarily have a chance to discuss it yet?
Right, I think as long as you guys do that, I know, I, away from the house, it's not going to be any issues. But again, we needed a kid that engineers to talk about it and see what he's going to come up with. And like I say, I was bringing a little bit of both for, like, the majority, for all these people.
Thank you.
Nice to hear.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a public comment on non-agenda items only? Just here for party. All right, thank you very much. Item number nine will be our trustee comments. We'll start it, Colleen's up.
I don't have anything other than what I, well, I guess, the IT we have looked at, or Liz is getting prices for the two new computers, and I'll have to get with Liz to find out if she's gotten those prices back yet. No, I sent that to you. Okay, you know, my email's been down, so perhaps you did, yeah, I've got trouble with my email, so I've got to get with, after that, but nothing else.
A couple items, I know that we have a serious dumpster issue that's, I, I think Liz has already worked on and addressing, but, you know, do we have any update on that?
A letter went out today.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Regarding the specific property you were talking about, correct? You also had mentioned three properties.
Yes.
Okay, so...
I saw one was addressed.
One, Bob told me looks, has never looked better, he told me.
Okay.
The other one, which has been a reoccurring issue, I sent out a, a letter today. The third one, we're going to wait one week because it's never been an issue before. If it's still there, a week from today, we will send out a letter. The, the address I found is three six six.
Good.
Okay. Oh, are you done?
No.
Okay, I just have one more thing, real quick, historic society meets tomorrow night, 7:00 PM.
No, one more second, I'm not... There, there are some street issues that have been brought to council's awareness, especially off the Edward Street. Former trustee Sliva has made it aware, I took a drive over there earlier today, and especially with all the rain, and there's definitely some area that we need to look at. Maybe Councilman Ashman could take a look at that further, you know, since he's on streets, you know, and I know we've had much of a budget for that.
I am aware of what you're talking about there, Mark, and I would like to, to make plans to hook up with Bob, and then we'll review it together as to what the situation there is, and then we're back to council as to what we find.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, I have one more thing. If I could just ask that the DPW just validate or confirm that the street light by the tennis courts there at Varsity and Edward Street is functioning? It's been out for some time, like, for years.
Years.
And I don't know if it was, if it got in...
Varsity and Edward?
Yeah, there was street, like, if, if they could just confirm it, that's it, now I am done.
That's actually on Varsity? Or is it the one actually in the corner or it went further up?
Uh, it's not so long ago. It's the, it's the, a street light that's been out, just want to confirm that all the street lights are lit, working.
Okay.
You know, and on that note, wasn't that a good one, that we addressed, you know, with all the new LEDs?
Yes.
You know what I mean?
Yes, it should have been on that.
Right, I just want to be sure.
Yep. Is it on Varsity or Edward? I think I've had Bob look at it before it's light, but, yeah. He doesn't take a look.
Well, you'll know very late.
Are we ready?
Sure.
Okay. First of all, I noticed that it seems like there's a recently constructed fence that is right up, right next to the concrete on the sidewalk on James Street. That's at the house that was built at 186 Ball. And I just would like to ask if maybe Bill or somebody could check and make sure that that's combined with ordinances, because I thought they, you could not put a fence that close to a sidewalk there. There's...
So you think it's too, it, it can be right on the property line, period?
I don't know where the property line actually is, but I mean, the sidewalks here, the fence is literally right there within an inch of concrete.
186?
Yeah.
In the front?
This is on the side, or as it goes on James Street.
Sure.
And I just want to make sure that's checked to see, because that's a, a brand-new fence just went up, and I want to make sure that it's, it's in compliance. If it's in compliance, I don't have concern.
Because they did come into the office and ask for ordinances, and I did give them a fencing ordinance, so... But didn't they have to have that inspected after it was erected? You don't have to have any fence permit or inspection, so as long as it's within the ordinance.
Yeah, I, I can't see where, I can't imagine we would build our sidewalk right exactly at the property.
Right.
So that's why I was questioning.
Sure.
I remember a previous case also on James Street where a fence was built right there, and they were citing the resident, and I think they had to pay some kind of fine variance fee or whatever in order to allow that fence to remain, so since this one is just right there, right on top of the sidewalk, I thought I'd have that checked.
Okay.
The second thing is that I really am disappointed that we did not take on item E under seventy business about interim staff increases, because I think you and Bob are doing a great job going in, and I wish we would have, and we would have been to that, to show our support of your extra efforts during this period in absence of the road construction, so I just want to express my disappointment that we weren't able to take that item up tonight. And the, the third thing is I do have a little concerns about the, I understand the situation on Edward Street rest of the port, but I'm a little bit concerned that, you know, I know Dan had raised questions on the master plan when a single resident raised a point in that, so I've got the master plan, now we have a single resident raised a concern about a street and seven, we have all this resources going towards investigating that. I'm not saying we shouldn't investigate it, but I think that we need to be careful that we're following proper process and taking everybody equally and not, you know... I, I think we just need to be professional and make sure we, we use the right process when we have residents bring issues to us and not sidestep the, the correct process, that's all I'm saying on that. Residential trash hauling, we need to implement ASAP, Monday pickups, and we have three trash haulers, period.
And we have, you had requested, my drill nurse will look at that, and he will set that and give that to us for next meeting?
Starting at seven.
Starting at seven. I would like it to also be implemented, you know, as well, I, I think that's getting somewhat technical stuff.
Well, it gets in time for our next meeting, about the twenty-two weeks.
Yeah, I won't be here, I hope, can I, can I get on the phone and express my opinion?
Well, you're not, you're not voting for that.
I'm trying to keep this under three minutes, Mark. Well, I, well, I just, I would very much like to pursue that, and then when, on the commercial dumpster side, let's, let's go at them, and see what comes up too.
Yeah, there's only been a couple that have been a problem.
Right?
Liz, if Bob can take a look at the corner of Bill and James. A chunk of sidewalk has been, it's, it's kind of bad, and I think it'd be repaired sooner rather than later. It's kind of right in front of my house on the corner. It's like, it's the first chunk, so maybe trucks went over it and broke it, but it's going to start to... Yeah, right up, it's right on Bill Street, corner James.
I will have to leave that.
But that's all I have.
Dan, do you want to do the street report?
Yeah, sure, what I have to report, and certainly, Tanya is aware of this as well, but I did need the trustee to go and sit in, and, uh, I'll tell her on Saturday morning, had reviewed the engineering concept drawing of, of fixing the drain across the park. We did walk the area, where the proposed drain would be and where it would go. We did find some differences between what Bob had initially talked to the, the engineer about and what was actually on paper, and I believe at that point, Tanya prepared me for a walk, we were going to go back to Row and, and explain that we were looking for, and the way we understood it to be is to extend that pipe out past the sidewalk, and, and for a lack of a better description, just, just pass that rock pile on that private property and, and then backfill that, and then start the bio-suel from that rock pile down to the creek. I thought that's what we talked about. Don't, you know, again, for council's knowledge, it's not going to be a cheap project, so we got to look at the most reasonable and, and financially effective way to get it done. And then the only other concern I had, and I thought I heard the resident speak tonight, you know, we can't let this drag on, at some point, it sounds like, you know, that his system, he's ready to go. And right now, it sounds like he's just waiting on us. And I think the longer he waits, the more he's just going to move on, and we could be out any private property access that, that may be available to us today if we don't act on it soon.
Thank you. Anything else? Dan, anything else from you?
Dan, do you have anything else?
No, that's it.
All right, thank you.
I just want to say that the pothole on Ranger has been reported to Oakland County Road Commission, so if anybody, the village doesn't take care of Oakland, Earlwood and Granger, but that has been reported, it's getting very, very big.
And potholes on Earlwood and Granger can be reported to us, we will just call in...
Oh, I just did it myself.
Okay.
I mean, I didn't fix the pothole, I just...
Well, I mean, just for residents' knowledge.
Yeah, if you're just, as a complimentary, as a courtesy?
Yes.
Okay. What's that reported?
Populous season. All right, and Pat, you can give a skate park update.
My understanding is that most of the equipment, the skateboard equipment's out in there.
It is.
And, and that will open up the possibility of using that area for, for organizational use to the village. And we want to, we want to pursue that, so...
Agreed. So, everybody bring your ideas, right?
Yes, please.
All right.
Thank you very much. All right. I think we are ready to enter a motion to adjourn.
Can, can I just mention one thing?
Oh, yes.
You guys are talking about the big drain project, none of that has been put in the budget, so, just...
The next step will be, we had, Indiana, I'm going to go ahead and continue to elaborate, we had a run-up based on what we needed or wanted. We now have to have the two engineers connect and discuss and figure out what is best for both of them to work together. That's what we need approval for tonight, was to get permission for the two engineers to talk together. We'll now do that on the 24th, and then the two of them can come up with what the plan is, and then bring it back to us in order to look at it again, so that's going to change, we just don't know where.
We can always imagine.
Correct, and then we'll have to go from there at that point and see what, you know, what comes between the communication between the engineers.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
I need to find that out.
Who knows what we'll do, but that's our next step.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. Now, we have a motion to adjourn. We can vote for adjourn.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Sartorico, supported by Councilman Robinson, and eight thirty-four, I'll declare.
All right.
Opposed. Motion carries.